I appreciate everybody being on the line. I want to thank, first of all, thank the I T S department, Keith, and Ken and his, all of his folks for working so hard on allowing us to do this and try this during these very interesting and troubling times for not only our nation and our city, but for the world. So I want to thank everyone for doing a lot of hard work. I also want to thank Lucy and the Planning Commission team. As you know, a lot of times, a lot of work goes into preparing for these meetings, and especially when we're having a teleconference meeting. And so I just want to say thank you to everybody involved. I also want to thank the commissioners for your patience as we go in these uncharted territories. As you know, one of our most important things is to keep everyone safe, including our team, the commissioners, and of course, the public. And so we were very, we're trying to meet CDC guidelines, and so for that reason, you all were sent the meeting agenda, and so we are on item B, which is, we need to establish the ability for us to even use this telephonic meeting. And so what we're gonna... But before we get to that point, we need to do a roll call. And so this is gonna, this is how we're gonna do roll call every time. And this time, I'm gonna say your name, and if you are present on the phone, and then you'll have to reply, yes, present. Okay? So let's try this. So we usually take a roll call. We need to take a roll call to make sure that we have a quorum. So first, we'll go alphabetically order on all of these roll calls. And so we are, Commissioner Farr, are you present?
I'm present.
Commissioner Gobble, are you present?
I'm present.
Commissioner Haynes, are you present?
I am present.
Commissioner Johnson, are you present?
I'm present.
Commissioner Moore, are you present?
I'm present.
Commissioner Murphy, are you present?
I'm present.
Commissioner Sims, are you present?
I'm present.
Commissioner Tibbs, are you present?
I'm present.
Excellent. We have a quorum for our meeting. And so I'm going to now hand it over to Alex, our attorney, and to discuss why we are having this, this meeting and, and the legal authority. Alex, are you on the line?
I am. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Planning Commission members, staff, and any members of the public that are observing this. Just a quick notation, as you are aware, the governor has issued an executive order that permits local boards and commissions to conduct essential business electronically, provided that the boards and commissions comply with certain parameters, which you are all using today, and planning staff has worked to make sure that those are happening. However, in order to conduct the rest of your meeting electronically, as a prerequisite, I recommend that the Planning Commission deliberate and adopt a motion to this effect, that the meeting agenda constitutes essential business of this body, and that meeting electronically is necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of Tennesseans in light of the COVID-19 outbreak.
Thank you, Alex. And so this is gonna be maybe the hard part of the meeting, and what we're gonna do is, you know how we usually will call for a motion in the meeting? We will do the same here, but you can't see the person making the motion. So if y'all will bear with me, when I say, is there a motion to have a meeting, as Alex explained, by telephonic method, then what you'll do is you'll hit your raise your hand button, and I will call on you to make the motion. So if you want to make the motion, if you'll raise your hand electronically, then I will call on you. So I have Council Lady Murphy, would you like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, we usually just say move to approve.
Yes, move, so you moved to, I'm sorry, you moved to approve telephonically?
Yes.
Excellent. Now, is there a second? Jessica, Vice Chair Farr?
I made a sec, I seconded that motion.
Perfect. Now, all in favor, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do roll call again, okay? So all in favor of that motion, you'll have to say aye. And since Vice Chair Farr seconded, she's an aye. Aye. Commissioner Gobble?
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Council Lady is an aye, she made the motion. Commissioner Sims?
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Aye.
There's eight ayes and zero nays, and it's approved that we will hold this meeting telephonically. So our next item up on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. So I know this is hard to do this way, but we're gonna have to do the voting all the same way. So first, is there a motion to approve the agenda? And I see Council Lady Murphy. Do you?
I move for adoption.
Move for adoption. Is there a second? Commissioner Tibbs?
I second.
And all in favor, we'll go through a roll call, say aye. Commissioner Farr?
Aye.
Commissioner Gobble?
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Council Lady Murphy made the motion. Commissioner Sims?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Tibbs, I'm just gonna go through the list every time, even if you've made the motion, okay? That would just be easier on me. Commissioner, Council Lady Murphy?
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Aye.
Eight ayes, and the, the agenda is adopted. Now we are on to item D, which is the approval of the February 13th, 2020 minutes, and also the February 27th, 2020 minutes. You all received those minutes ahead of this meeting. And is there a motion to approve the minutes? Raise your hand. Commissioner Johnson, do you make the motion?
Thank you, Chair. I make motion to approve two previous meeting minutes.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second? Commissioner Tibbs, do you make the second?
Yes, I second.
All in favor, we're gonna go through the roll call again, and we'll do everyone. All in favor of adopted, adoption of February 13th and February 27th minutes, say aye. And so Commissioner Farr?
Aye.
Commissioner Gobble?
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Murphy? Council Lady Murphy?
Aye.
Commissioner Sims?
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Aye.
All right, ayes have it, eight to and none nays.
Chairman, pardon my interruption, this is Lucy. Before we take the vote, I wanted to suggest that we ask if there's any discussion, as we typically would, from our, from our legal counsel.
Oh, yeah, that's my fault. Was there any, let me ask this, just we'll go on to this, was there any discussion under, let's, let's, on, on the minutes? If, is there any discussion? And if you'll raise your hand, and, and I am not seeing any discussion, would, does that suffice, Alex, if I do it that way?
Yeah, the, the two previous votes, since everyone voted yes, there was, there clearly wasn't discussion. But going forward, after the second has been registered, it might be a good idea to just ask if anyone wants to raise their hand for discussion before the vote is tallied.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, now, we are on to, and I did not see any discussion, or there was no discussion over the phone on the, the other items either, Alex, I'll just say that, I didn't see. So now we are on to recognition of the council members, are there? We have, who, Lucy, on our team, so this is, let's explain this real quick. We have folks down at Howard School, I believe, Lucy, is that correct? We have our team down there?
That's correct. We have two staff who are physically present at the Howard Building to see if we received any members of the public, or any council members who wish to express views about the item, on, items on the agenda. And getting a note from our team there that there is no one present at the Howard School, and that we don't have any comment to report physically on site. I would ask, at this point, the other, other staff who are present, Lisa Milligan or Greg, if we have any other comments to submit.
Lisa or Greg? And that, is that Greg?
This is Greg, yeah.
Okay, there's, so they, there is no council members, seeing no council members, right, correct?
This is George Ricker, there are no council members present at Howard School.
All right, we're going on to item F, which is the consent agenda. And, let's see, we have, Lisa is gonna handle the, the consent agenda, is, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, all right, so we, Lisa? You recognize?
Sure, we, we have one item on the consent agenda. We will be hearing item one, which is the C I B. And so we only have one item for consent agenda, which is item number 54, to accept the director's report.
All right, and so we will, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda, item 54? Raise your hand in the app. And Vice Chair, you, you have a motion to?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second?
A second.
You'll have to raise your hand. Who was that?
Brian Tibbs, it's raised.
Commissioner Tibbs, thank you, sir. That's a proper second. Is there any discussion? See, Commissioner Farr, do you want to speak? Are you okay? You have to undo your hand.
No, I'm okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, so seeing no one else wishing to speak, no other discussion, all in favor, we'll go down the list. Vice Chair Farr?
Aye.
Commissioner Gobble?
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Murphy? Council Lady? Commissioner Sims?
Aye.
Then Commissioner Tibbs?
Aye.
All right, and that motion is adopted, eight for, none against. And now, we are on item G, which is items for deferral. And I believe Lisa is gonna take this item, is that correct, Lisa?
That's correct.
All right, go ahead, Lisa.
Okay, the four following items are recommended for indefinite deferral. Item 2A, 2019 CP 014001, and the associated case, item 2B, 2019 Z 158 PR 001, both recommended for indefinite deferral. Additionally, item 3A, 2020 CP 013001, and 3B, 2020 Z 020 PR 001, both recommended for indefinite deferral. The following items are recommended for deferral to the April 9th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. Item 4A, 2019 CP 013002, on page four of your agenda, and the associated case, item 4B, 2008 SP 002004. Item 5A, on page five of your agenda, 2020 CP 006001, and the associated case, item 5B, 2020 Z 052 PR 001. Item 6A, 2020 CP 007001, and the associated case, item 6B, 2020 SP 016001. Item 7A, 2020 CP 008001, and the associated case, item 7B, on page six of your agenda, 2020 SP 009001. Item 8A, 2020 CP 012001, the associated case, item 8B, 2015 SP 005010. Item 9, 2020 CP 00001. Item 10, 2019 Z 015 TX 001. Item 11, on page seven of your agenda, 2020 Z 006 TX 001. Item 12, 2020 Z 007 TX 001. Item 13, 2018 SP 027001. Item 14, 2019 SP 055001. Item 15, 2020 SP 003001. Item 16, on page eight of your agenda, 2020 SP 011001. Item 17, 2020 SP 012001. Item 18, 2020 SP 013001. Item 19, 2020 SP 014001. Item 20, 2020 SP 015001. Item 21, on page nine of your agenda, 2020 SP 018001. Item 22A, 2020 SP 019001. The associated case, 22B, 8487 P 007. Item 23, 2019 S 086001. Item 24, 2020 S 030001. Item 25, on page 10 of your agenda, 2020 S 037001. Item 26, 2020 S 054001. Item 27, 2020 S 060001. Item 28, 2020 S 062001. Item 29, 2020 S 064001. Item 30, on page 11 of your agenda, 2020 S 066001. Item 31, 2019 HP 001001. Item 32, 2005 UD 006043. Item 33, 12383P 002. Item 34, 15877P 006. Item 35, on page 12 of your agenda, 16373P 001. Item 36, 2019 Z 162 PR 001. Item 37, 2020 Z 007 PR 001. Item 38A, 2020 Z 008 PR 001. The associated case, 38B, 6177P 004. Item 39A, on page 13 of your agenda, 2020 Z 009 PR 001. Item 39, the associated case, 39B, 88P 029001. Item number 40, 2020 Z 013 PR 001. Item 41, 2020 Z 016 PR 001. Item 42, 2020 Z 022 PR 001. Item 43, 2020 Z 024 PR 001, and that's on page 14 of your agenda. Item 44, 2020 Z 028 PR 001. Item 45, 2020 Z 029 PR 001. Item 46, 2020 Z 037 PR 001. Item 47, 2020 Z 041 PR 001. Item 48, 2020 Z 042 PR 001. The associated case, 48B, on page 15 of your agenda, 10981P 005. Item 49, 2020 Z 043 PR 001. Item 50, 2020 Z 045 PR 001. Item 51, 2020 Z 048 PR 001. Item 52, 2020 Z 049 PR 001. And item 53, on page 16 of your agenda, 2020 DTC 010001.
Excellent, Lisa, thank you. And so we'll go through this list and make sure that I'm correct. So we have the four items for indefinite deferral, are items 2A, 2B, 3A, 3B, and all the other items from 4A all the way to 53, which is, they're all deferred to the April 9th, 2020 meeting. Is that correct, Lisa?
That's correct.
Perfect. And so commissioners, you've heard those particular items for deferral, indefinite deferral, and one meaning deferral? And if you guys would, if there's a motion, if you could raise your hand in the app? And we have Commissioner Tibbs, you make?
A move for, move for approval?
It's a proper motion, is there a second? Commissioner Moore?
I second.
Perfect. Any discussion? Raise your hand if there's discussion. I'm looking through, I don't see anybody, is there any discussion? You can also interrupt. Seeing no discussion, all in favor, say aye when I call your name. Commissioner, Vice Chair Farr?
I approve, aye.
Commissioner Gobble?
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Council Lady Murphy?
Aye.
Commissioner Sims?
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Aye.
Eight for, none against, and it is, those items are deferred. Now we are on to the next motion, the next item on our agenda, excuse me, let me go down to, that is our items for public hearing. And so we have really what we are here today for, which is the C I B. And I believe Mr. Claxton is gonna do that presentation, and I will tell you that we have that presentation will pop up on your app, and I believe it'll also be presented down for the public. And?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Go ahead, Greg.
Thank you, Commissioner Greg Claxton, the Planning Department. I'm sharing my screen now, so you should all see my PowerPoint for this afternoon. I'll be presenting the capital improvements budget for FY 2021, FY 2020 to '21, FY 2025, '26. Just as a reminder for the public, the capital improvements budget functions by requiring that any capital improvement that Metro makes must be included in the C I B. However, inclusion in the C I B does not guarantee funding, it only lays out what Metro could spend money on. The C I B includes six years of projects, but is only binding on the first year. And in terms of what's considered a capital improvement, that would be any building, structure, work, or improvement with an average life over 10 years and a cost greater than $50,000. The commission's role is to assemble the C I B based on the requests that departments and council members submit through the Finance Department, and to provide it to the mayor accompanied by its report and recommendations of the planning commission with respect to the overall program. I mentioned a moment ago that inclusion in the C I B does not guarantee funding for any particular project. To be funded, you need some other source of funding, usually with action by council that allocates money. The predominant source of funding for capital projects are general obligation bonds, usually approved through a capital spending plan at council. The other major source of, of funding are revenue bonds, primarily for water services and the sports authority, 4% funds for project renovations and information technology equipment, enterprise funds for the operating budget, and federal and state fund. For the FY 21 C I B, we posted it online and distributed to the commission last week. It's been available for public review alongside the staff report. As we noted earlier, we have not received any comment on it so far. Over, over the six years included in the C I B, there are requests for $9.8 billion in funding across 890 projects. The largest year in which departments and council members requested projects for was FY 21, that's the first year of the C I B in which the C I B is binding, that amounts to about $3.5 billion. We also track about $1 billion in requests beyond the six years of the C I B. These are primarily schools, but additionally some park projects. A core part of the planning department's review is a lot checking alignment of each project where possible against Nashville Next. A lot of this occurs through checking criteria we've developed based on our guiding principles, ensure opportunity for all, expand accessibility, create economic prosperity, foster strong neighborhoods, advance education, changing the environment, and be Nashville. We also check where we have a geographic area or a specific location for a project against the overall Nashville Next growth and preservation concept map, particularly looking for projects that helps support appropriate growth along our centers and corridors. In addition to the Nashville Next criteria, we also look at multiple factors that suggest which projects should be a priority. We look at project-specific factors, such as legal mandate. We look at how departments have prioritized. We typically look at council priorities, although I note this year with the new council coming in, and with the expedited budget process, councils have prioritized their request this year. We look at coordination opportunities, particularly when one project depends on another project to proceed. We look for alignment with Nashville Next, like I mentioned. And then we also try to look at, among similar projects, those that have a high service effectiveness, the population that serve compared to the cost of the project, or a strong return on investment. Planning Commission's recommendations are grouped into these tiers as shown on the screen. A projects, which I'll go through in more detail in a moment, are those that are recommended as planned. B projects, which are the bulk of projects in the C I B, are, we call this recommended funded funding is available. Essentially, this reflects that a project aligns with Nashville Next and can be funded. There are a small number of projects that we recommend further work for, either additional discussion and development of the project, or scheduling in some way. We identify some projects outside the scope of the general plan and not assess due to things that kind of the general plan gives no real guidance on, such as office renovation, projects at general hospital where they're purchasing equipment to expand their operations, that kind of thing. And then we do look for projects that do not conform with the general plan. We recommend to get funding those projects until the plan and the project align. In past years, we have, those have changed over time to changes to the project so that they align with the plan. In some cases, we've also modified the plan. And I'll, I'll give them a, there's one project that makes this criteria, I'll show in a moment. Okay? Okay, for those projects that we've identified as A, recommended as planned, these are in several categories, I'm gonna walk through these very briefly. This includes projects whose funding is already secured. That is Metro Water projects with approved revenue bonds, or the Metro Arts, public art projects that are funded through the one percent art program. We also recommend kind of our core asset protection programs. These are the major programs that departments use to keep kind of the major asset classes that Metro manages in good shape, maybe paving, roads, traffic facilities, bridges, or kind of fire hall maintenance, library maintenance, parks maintenance. We've identified current commitments, usually reflecting council action or prior funding. We have a series of body worn camera programs for the public defender, the DA, and police department. M T A or W E G O matches for their federal grants. Undoing projects, E B S software replacement for finance and criminal justice closeout. And then we have a handful of other recommended projects. Public property management software for finance, preparatory planning for relocating facilities at Metro Southeast, land for new services, library, infrastructure at Invision Casey, and support for neighborhood planning and infrastructure. There is one project that we've identified as not conforming to the general plan. This is a request that's been in the C I B for a number of years, to widen a portion of Bell Road from various numbers, number of lanes up to five lanes. That specifically conflicts with the major Incolector Street plan, which recommends three lanes. We would recommend that this be a recommendation of X until, like I said earlier, the plan and the project request align. We also distributed this afternoon a number of amendments. Most of these are corrections with some updates since we posted the C I B last week. First, there's an entry for most projects that's called the Capital Priority Group or Capital Group. This is just a basic categorization so that similar projects are grouped together. We found that a number of these were incorrectly categorized in the published draft of the C I B. For example, the paving program was identified as affordable housing. We're just, we need to clean that up. Second, in kind of discussing the draft C I B with commissioners, we had a request to change the description of the department priority code. Previously, this was identified as required in the year shown. As we talked through kind of the volume of spending and kind of how departments seem to be using that, we wanted to soften that a little bit to say needed in the year shown. Similarly, we had a request to include a chart showing the volume of spending by each of those department priorities. We also discussed with multiple commissioners, kind of an interest in seeing what the C I B can do to ensure kind of a rapid recovery from tornado damage. We don't have a specific change to make right now. I think that's still being developed, but we would just have, we develop this language that suggests kind of a further comment to the mayor. For facilities damaged by tornadoes of March third, twenty twenty, that are specifically included in the C I B, consider changing the year of their funding request to F Y twenty one. This is for projects like schools, where the school board does a good job of kind of programming out their requests across multiple years. If there's a facility with tornado damage, probably, in most cases, we believe they can address that through other programs or other projects, but we can go ahead and move those up to F Y twenty one in future drafts if there's a need to. That just makes it easy to sort of find a potential way to fund a project. In addition, in the published draft of the C I B, we had a couple of things we need to correct compared to the briefings that we gave commissioners. First, for project nineteen, D A zero 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 two, the D A and Police Department Bodywork Camera Project, we're changing the requested amount from ten million dollars to about six point five million, and changing the M P C recommendation from B to A. We could publish that in the press. Similarly, eighteen, P D zero 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 three, again, Police Department Bodywork Camera Project and patrol vehicle dash cam. We had reported to you all that the M P C recommendation was A. We had it in the document, we need to correct that. And then third, twenty, D F, zero 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 one, the Bodyworn Camera Project for the Public Defender's Office. They need to be funded at seventy-five percent of the district attorney. And we found that that got out of sync at some point, and we're changing the request from three point eight to four point nine. Last, we had mistakenly included seventeen, not last, nearly last. We had mistakenly included seventeen, H A, zero 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 four, Casey Place Community Campus, J A, as a recommended project, A. At the time, we had looked at including that because it's requesting outside funding, new market tax credits. But we weren't briefing everyone on that, so we would recommend bringing that recommendation back. Lastly, we would also recommend changing the M P C recommendations from B to A for two public works projects, the bikeways program and the sidewalks program. And with that, staff's recommendation is to submit the F Y twenty twenty, twenty one capital improvements budget for consideration by the mayor with amendment.
Thank you, Greg. We really appreciate it. And so now we are, at the time of our meeting, to open this item up for public hearing. And so we will hand it over to you again, to, and the public, anyone that has come down to Howard Office Building to, to make public comment. Is there anyone down there?
This is George Rucker at the Howard Office Building. There are no members of the public present who wish to participate in the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Rucker, appreciate that very much. So seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. And we will go on to commissioners. So I do wanna, we're in open discussion, and what I'm gonna do is just call your name. And then, just like we normally do, to see if you have anything to say, just to make sure that we get all the discussion in that we need to. So I want to make sure that we don't miss anyone. And I'm gonna go down the list like we normally do, in alphabetical order. But we'll start with Vice Chair, do you have any comment?
I do not have any comments. I just want to thank Greg for, once again, putting together a very thorough presentation and a lot of work that I know goes into putting the C I B together, as well as taking the time to do a really in-depth briefing with all of us individually. I think he addressed all my questions when we spoke earlier this week.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Gobble?
I can agree with the Vice Chair. I think they've done an excellent job of packaging it. I have no comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Haynes?
No comments. Mr. Claxton has done a great job as always. It's all my angle question.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Chair. I echo Vice Chair. It is a great undertaking to weigh on over nine hundred projects, to rate and walk through the department. And I would like to thank staff's hard work, and especially Greg's has been working past five years. And I think our C I B is now more and more like a planning document tied to financial and our goal. And I applaud our great hard work of staff. And I really appreciate all the amendments, and especially, you know, putting the sidewalks to A, that makes sense, and thank you again.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Moore?
I don't have any comments. I just want to echo all the comments from the other commissioners and thanking Greg and the team for putting this together. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Council Lady Murphy?
I really want to give a shout out to Greg and, and the effort that he and the Planning Commission have put in. I've had discussions with them since becoming Planning Chair about the C I B and cleaning it up and, you know, where it was when I came into office, the, I was gonna say fifteen years ago, but in twenty fifteen, it feels like fifteen years ago. I think that, you know, we're really moving towards it being a meaningful document that provides meaningful information and realistic ideas for not just the council and the metro departments, but for the public at large. And that is invaluable. And I just, I appreciate that so much. And I look forward to continuing that and doing more work with this at the council level to really make sure that it's a meaningful document that helps us plan and budget appropriately. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Council Lady. Commissioner Sims?
I join with everyone else in thanking Greg and the entire staff on a monumental task and convenient to us during such a difficult time. And Greg particularly, I'm excited that you're actually hitting on a way to model information. It's becoming more meaningful every year that I get to be part of this. And so thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Commissioner Tibbs?
Yeah, two comments. One, I was a little, it was kind of interesting about the body cams being on our capital improvements budget, but, but otherwise, I'm a broken record. That was a monumental task, and you've, you've done a great job as always. And with that, I think I'm, so I'd like to make a motion to approve.
That's a proper motion, and raise your hand if you want a second in the app. And we have Commissioner Moore?
I second.
That's a proper motion. Any other discussion? I want to say one thing. Greg and I had a good conversation, and, and the director. I think, I say this a lot, but I think the great thing about this particular document, as it is now that Greg has really improved on, is it really gets the departments and the department leadership to think about how they grow, not only short term, but, and, and what their priorities are. So I just want to say, I think the document really sparks that thinking and planning, and I just think it's a really great thing. And, and I just, I want to echo what Vice Chair said, that Greg and the team have done awesome work. So we, any, seeing no other discussion, there's been a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye, and I will go through the list. Vice Chair Farr?
Aye.
Commissioner Gobble?
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Council Lady Murphy?
Aye.
Commissioner Sims?
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Aye.
And eight ayes, zero nays, and the C I B passes. We are on other business under H, and under other business. I want to hand it over to Lucy, but I first want to make a comment. Again, thank you for your patience as we try to figure out how to protect the public, the staff, and the commissioners from the coronavirus and keep them safe. We have several commissioners that are above the age limit. The CDC saying that they should not get out. They, we also have, me personally, I have a heart issue. And so I just want to say thank you for allowing us to do this remotely. And I know that maybe, maybe other commissioners have some medical issues. So I, I want you all to know that myself, the Vice Chair, and I have spoken on this, and we, and, and the director. And so I'm gonna hand it over to her to kind of, we wanted to kind of see how this would go. The one issue that is always on our minds and always brings us up, which is great, is transparency and making sure the public has access and knows exactly what's going on. And so there's a balance there. We're grateful that we were able to do it through the executive order. Obviously, public input and transparency is really important. Director, you want to add anything?
Well, I want to say thank you to, again, I T S for helping to us to understand our, our opportunities and capabilities, and thank everyone for their patience. These are unprecedented times. And as Chairman, I think you just said really well that we're trying to balance a lot of different goals. And we believe that there is a good path forward for us to assess how to balance those goals. And we understand that, you know, moving forward as we look to additional commission items, we have a very rigorous test that we need to apply with respect to both protecting the health of our community and our commissioners, but also ensuring transparency and a really good public process, which is why we love planning. It is that holistic approach that involves communities in decision-making. And so we understand how important that is. And so we're looking at different ways to use technology to fulfill our, our mission. And, you know, I guess I would just say, stay tuned. This was a really helpful, you know, exercise for me to actually visualize how this type of meeting could be conducted. And so, you know, as we move forward, we will be in lots of communication with you and, and others on how we hope to proceed. And, and the last thing I'll say is, we're looking at what other cities are doing. You know, lots of different people in a lot of different fields are looking at how to do remote work. So there's, the good news is, there's lots of good information out there right now about best practices, and we want to use that. And so I thank you again for tonight, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Lucy. Are there any questions of the director? If you'll raise your hand if you have a question, or just, you can also say something. Any questions? Commissioners? We will be in contact with you. We wanted to see how this meeting went. Vice Chair, do you want to say anything else?
No, I am good, thank you.
Okay. So that concludes-
Oh, real quick, Greg. All of a sudden, I lost my hand. Apologize, I've been trying to raise my hand. But I did want to say, as you guys know, we were, well, we did have, this is historic report. We did have some properties that were affected. And there is a report out that we looked at. Just really quick, because we're still kind of recovering from that. There were two local historic landmarks and three historic overlays that were affected. They have been, as per the mayor's, they've been expediting permits for these. So I won't go into all the details of it, especially over here, but just something we should definitely make note of.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you for all your hard work on historic and, on the, on this issue with the tornado. So we really appreciate your, your guidance on that. Any other reports from any of the commissioners on parks or council reports? Council Lady, you want to say anything on the council?
No, I don't. I think I told you last time about the sidewalk waiver legislation that will be bringing back money to reimburse planning staff. I think I told you all about that. That did pass. And just similar to this, the council will be bumping back public hearings on zoning issues and things like that. And just, I've been asking all the council members to be patient with things and patient with the staff. And so I'm sure all of you want to mark your calendars for our next meeting, because I'm sure, unlike this meeting, forty of us on here will be a circus.
That's gonna be exciting. I'm glad I'm not gonna be on, I mean, I'm glad that you're there for, representing us. So thank you, Council Lady. Anything else for the order? Raise your hand in the app. I don't see anybody raising their hand. I'm looking, and we'll make sure. Again, thank you, everybody. And is there a motion for adjournment? Seeing no objection, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody. See you guys later.